Mayor, your question that you asked me.
Tell us what Costco's done for heaven's sake. Are they anything?
Oh, yeah. I mean, it's pretty busy. It's just they're not going to break ground until after the winter. You know, probably April, April. So because why would they break ground and then have to stop? And with the weather. So but now we've got a phone with them all. They did. So I mean, we're just getting you a paperwork. File them, crack them, plan them down. There's so many moving parts. Doesn't change our overall agreement. But there's a lot of detail these and sort of do it.
So like, was there any shells or tenant bells in the patch to it?
Yeah, that's. There were seven out of persons.
Okay.
So it's not just.
That's good.
Let's see. So when you're sending out.
One of them is what?
Well, under your gas station. Do it like that means you're way to church. Because we're gonna have like the next one will already I'll get straight over the church.
Going to go off twenty two or?
So. Good little John. Actually lies up at the back of a parking lot six. Down here.
Be nice.
Still on the draw. Get it done.
Yeah.
I told my wife that it'd get done. That'd give me excuse to buy a golf cart so I can.
Do the golf cart.
Golf.
Take the golf cart.
Yeah.
Hope you know as far enough to follow the church.
Yeah, that'd be good.
That'd be nice for you guys down there to have a way to get there really easily because you have to clear around the plot to get there now.
Yeah. I thought that great part of the nine year for our program, like they will move that up.
Well, it's in it. So maybe that's. You know, the wall. The second.
Yeah.
That'd be nice to get a connection there to three thousand from there.
Yeah, that'd be good.
I can handle that.
And that is good.
We'll be the mayor that finally got him here. That's been it's been talked about for.
Did I miss? Just still still progress.
Yeah.
We're talking about wait.
I'm obviously I'm just.
Well, it's only nine days once the break ground.
Uh, this is.
I don't want it.
The infrastructure of the.
Excellent. It is.
Yeah.
They're not going to move out first. They got.
Well, I think.
That'll be nice too.
Do they have the final say or who?
Because they'll they'll buy the whole thing. By the say and they give it past historically to say they won't take too many dangers. But they'll I'm sure there will be one financial institution. I don't know which one because I have five other major cities. But well, four, twenty nine, fifteen, I don't think they're in there. But you know, several of them want it. So we'll see. They won't. There will be promised several restaurants that they won't take.
Yes.
Well, they won't take the gas station.
Go out there.
Yeah. So that'll be. They'll have a gas station and then there will be probably two fast food. Probably one or two. Yeah. They'll take all faster. They make sure that they can sit down and so. And I've got three of those lying up. So if they don't go there or send them somewhere nearby.
Hot damn.
Great news, Mayor. Thank you.
You got a minute.
You got a minute. We're okay.
Five minutes fast.
Did you repeat everything you just said?
You're not fifteen minutes away early.
Missed all the good stuff.
I missed most of the good stuff too.
Here we go. Okay, we ready? Okay, welcome everybody to Plan Commission meeting tonight. We'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. We're going to get started. Thank you for being here. We have the entire commission here with us tonight. Uh, we have the invocation of thought by Commissioner Johnson and the pledge allegiance by Commissioner King. Go to that point.
Our Father in heaven, we pause, give thanks unto thee for the opportunity we have to meet together. In time, in our city and hopefully make decisions that will later serve the community members. We're thankful for the many blessings thou has given to us and pray for thy guidance and direction that we might do that which is best. And that would would be acceptable to those that we have been asked to serve and we ask these blessings in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item is to adopt tonight's agenda. It's been posted in accordance with state law. Unless we have some corrections, we can go ahead and adopt as stands.
I'll move that we adopt it.
Have a motion to adopt it a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is approval of our regular and work session minutes on January twenty first. Anyone has any corrections? We can take them. Otherwise, we'll take a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Let's have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is a time for public comment. It's an opportunity for the public to uh make comments to the planning commission. We do have two public hearings scheduled for tonight. So if you have a comment on those, we'll ask you to please wait till that public hearing time. Um, otherwise, please come to the podium, state your name, address, uh make your comment, and please try and keep it to about three minutes or less. Okay, go ahead and close public comment time. Next item is our public hearing for zoning amendment. Bryce Noah, which one of you has got this one?
I'll be doing that one.
Okay.
Uh, okay, before us, we have an application to change property from A one to general commercial. The applicant is sitting in the audience. Uh, he's requesting to rezone about an acre. Um, like I said, from A one to general commercial. Let me show you a map. So this is a property. There used to be a single family home there. When U dot widened the road, they demolished it. And then surplus the property and right development group has now purchased that. They desire to put some commercial uses in there. As far as the context, you have the Lakeview Plaza, I think it's called, with Rush Fund Center to the east. Then you've you have Walmart to the north. Then you do have a single family to the west. Uh, there are some other larger parcels that were left over from the widening as you move further west. And then to the south, you have single family residential. So uh, this is a recommendation to city council and also a public hearing for this specific item. Um, the approval standards for a rezone uh include um, you know, evaluating the impacts to the neighbors. And I've included in the packet, the general commercial zone and the permitted uses. And um, so yeah, if you have any questions, oh, here, I'll show you the map. Uh, so this is a map showing the town center overlay. So it is within the town center overlay. So there are some additional restrictions there. Also, uh, if you look at the general plan, their request is consistent with the general plan, which is for commercial. That's that red color. To the south is that that yellow color is low density residential. Then you can see it's kind of a zoomed out view. So you can get a bigger context. It's still A one, just because that's what the house was from a long time ago. And then you could see how that would fit in and be contiguous with the existing general commercial on the on the east and the north. And then this is the the general commercial zone with the permitted uses. Um, some of the uses allowed in the town center overlay would restrict some of that as far as auto. I think I did. Remember, right? I think I put the town center overlay ordinance in here as well.
It was in there.
Yeah. So if we want to look through that more carefully, that would probably be the biggest thing to evaluate is would the permitted use is allowed in the general commercial zone be appropriate for the context with the single family to the south? Like I said, this is a recommendation to city council. And let me know if you have any questions.
Do we know what that uh concrete pad or whatever it is that that's in the lot in the satellite photo is currently right now? I'm just curious. Is that a building or is that?
It looks like it's an old basketball court or something.
Okay.
Historic.
I was just curious.
It's.
Making sure it's not like some weird.
I I don't know, but maybe the applicant knows. I haven't I haven't seen a sur- like a survey or anything. I don't believe that's a structure. I think that's a cement pad, like you said.
I don't think there's anything on that. It knocked everything down when you not took it over.
I was just curious. Sorry. Thank you.
Well, unless the commission feels differently, this is scheduled for a public hearing. So I'll get an open public hearing. Okay, we'll go ahead and open public hearing. Um, rules the same as I stated for public comment. Please come to the podium and and if make your comment. And if you're the applicant, I'll ask you to wait until afterwards. That you have more time that way. Yeah, no, it's fine. You have more time that way. Okay, we'll go ahead and close public hearing. And I'll go ahead and invite the applicant up now. If you want to come up, we can have a conversation.
And did you include the town center overlay as part of this? Because we. Yeah, I I think I copied the language there. If not, I can easily pull it up. It's on their website. But it it does include just that full length right along there, right? Or is it? Because I know that the north side is the town center overlay. Yeah, I see the red right there. That's that anything within there is in the town center overlay.
Noah Royce, good to see you guys. Just so I'm clear, or sorry, Logan Johnson with Right Development Group. Our address is eleven seventy eight West Legacy Crossing in Centerville. The the property is already in the town center overlay, if I understand correctly. That zone, that overlay already exists on the property. And this application is to to amend the zoning map to change it from A one to general commercial.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, you wouldn't. So yeah, the an overlay zone is a little bit confusing because it essentially has two zonings. The the underlying zone is what you've applied to change. The overlay would remain in effect.
Yeah. Thank you. Just the only things I would add is we uh would love to take this to council and discuss with them. And we would appreciate a motion tonight uh in either direction. Just based on my experience as a planning commissioner, um, it seems like this is a very simple application. Um, the commercial zone in compliance with the general plan. We we know that the city is currently considering uh the creation of additional zoning tools. And um, you know, we're anxious and watching how that proceeds. The purpose for our application is um, we're anxious to develop and a lot of the tenants we've been talking to um, are hedging uh on their commitments until they know the zone that's in place. And so we have two or three that we've been talking to. But they said, what's the zone? And we said, well, it's a little complicated. And so we thought in one way to to be pro commercial and to eliminate some of that uncertainty, this seemed like a appropriate step supported by the general plan. So I don't know what that concrete pad is other than concrete, but happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
And do you have any issues with access?
No, we met with U dot initially when they sold it. They had postured that there would be no access. So before closing, we had a pre app meeting with the region one guys. And um, in an agreement to grant, I believe the family is the Holbrooks. There's a family that owns the property next door, and then the gentleman that owns also lives directly behind that family property in the cul de sac on seventeen eighty. He joined our our meeting with U dot and and was present. And we all agreed that we would have a shared access aligned um or centered on that uh that right where the property line essentially. So no.
Driveway ish thing.
That's right. So we're confident that we have access onto the highway through U dot. Thanks. Yeah.
Sounds good. Any other questions?
I don't know if you what information you can share at this time, but what businesses are you looking at?
Yeah, there's there's a few. There's a coffee shop. There was a a larger building um that we would maybe have multiple tenants in. We've thrown around medical office. Um, and so the brokers are out there going and um maybe TMI, it's similar brokers that have been working on a site nearby. And it's it's impacted the certainty of uh of bringing future tenants. And so those are some that we've been talking to. And so um, we don't have anything signed with anyone because again, a little bit of uncertainty with it being the A one zone. So we're just trying to clear the way for that.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Um, have you had any? You said you met with the owner behind. Is there? Do you know of any concerns about this neighbors?
They were supportive. So they don't plan on uh, I think they have some uh tenants in that house that's next door. And they, I think, down the road, not anytime soon from what I could gather, but down the road, they would like to redevelop that commercial corner. And so for that reason, I think they're somewhat interested in the access that would be on the highway and as part of the granting of that you know, would require us to give them cross access, which we're happy to do. And so um, I think their short term plan. I mean, I want to speak for them, but five to ten years is is just live life out, let things happen, and then maybe after that do something.
Yeah, that's your your question about the concern with the neighbors is kind of why I was asking about what kind of tenants you're looking at because I'd hate to see like a car wash going right behind.
Yeah.
Uh, houses right there. And that's would be my concern. But other than that. I know.
Thank you.
I guess I will ask because we can't make a part of our motion, but just ask because you're thinking of what goes in there. Consider you have people living, you know, right behind it and things. So.
Yeah, sorry. Was that a question or just?
No, it was just.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
As you're as you're thinking of what businesses to bring in, just please keep that in mind that you've got residents that live like right behind where you're going to be putting stuff in.
Absolutely. And and you know, personally, I'm very familiar with the buffer zones uh that the city establishes here. And unfortunately, the city's got a really dynamic uh system in place as well that could help buffer that with increased landscape setbacks, fencing types and landscaping. So yeah, we will absolutely keep that in mind. Thank you, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we can take a motion. Or rediscussion. I don't I don't see it. I mean, it confirms the general plan. I don't I don't see this as being an issue.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, please.
Mr. Chair, I move that uh we recommend approval to um city council for the request by Logan Johnson and Wright Development Group for a rezone, a property located approximately twenty one ninety one west seventeen hundred south, uh which contains approximately one acre in the A one zone. Proposed zone is commercial zone, general commercial.
You have a motion of second?
Second.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is a text amendment. It's a public hearing for text amendments proposed um for accessory dwellings in the PRD zone.
Okay, you're stuck with me again. Sorry. So uh, the we've also received an application from Mr. Mike Bastian, who is in the audience to add in the ability to do ADUs accessory dwelling units in the PRD zone. If you read the zoning language right now, if you look, uh, it does not allow a it does not allow ADUs. So um yeah, if you look at at the language here, that it's in red is what's proposed. So you would have a a minimum of fifty two hundred square feet with three car garage or nine foot wide parking pad to the side of the primary dwelling. That's what his language is proposed. Uh, so one thing to consider, um, when anytime you have an ADU, you're going to have more vehicles. And so that's probably the principal concern there is making sure that we can accommodate. Um, in the uh, in most PRDs, you have a two car garage. But some PRDs, you don't always have it. So this would have, this would change the rules for all PRDs. Um, so if you have a two car garage, generally speaking, they fill the the garage up with junk. And then you try to park in front of the garage. And then if you have another unit there, you know, you're going to need maybe another two spots for the if it's a young couple, husband and wife or something, uh, you're probably going to need four stalls to accommodate. And that can be a problem in in a small lot type situation. So that we do have a a little bit of a precedent that we've set in the RPC zone. We allow lots as small as thirty five hundred square feet in the RPC zone. That's the zone that was that uh shoreline and Stillwater was built in. And they have a variety of lot sizes, but uh they they do allow ADUs, but they say that they can only be on fifty six hundred square feet or or bigger. I don't know why he came up with fifty two versus the fifty six that's already in the ordinance, probably because the specific subdivision that he's working on probably has some lots that are fifty two that he wants to be able to get the get the units in. But uh, you know, nevertheless, if if it's wide enough to accommodate, so a three car garage would would add another one. Uh, he did send us an example. I'll show you kind of what he's thinking. I'll show you here. So this is an example of a home that would be able to fit in some of the lots there and has a three car garage. And he's he's shown us here that here the third car garage, you would go in the side and there'd be entrance right here. And so you have the kitchen, bar, bathroom and bedroom. So one bedroom unit. Um, looks like there's not a wall there, but there could be a wall. So they'd have one stall inside potentially if the homeowner wanted to do it that way. Otherwise, you're looking at one stall right in front of the garage. So one to two. And then generally speaking, you're going to have a twenty foot front setback since we've changed it and I in this the particular subdivision that he's looking at, they do have a driveway that you can actually park cars in instead of the mini driveways that we got rid of. Uh, so there would be at least three driveway parking stalls and then three garage parking stalls. So it'd be a total of six six uh stalls. Another way of looking at it, you could say that the lot needs to be a minimum width, or you could say you have to have a minimum number of 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 stalls. Or if you were worried about people actually filling the garage with junk and not being able to park in there, you could say that it has to be a minimum number of exterior stalls. And we have a definition for a stall being nine by twenty. So you could say each ADU has to accommodate their own nine by twenty. And whether or not they're tandem or side by side is another thing to consider too, as far as the convenience and functionality of the home. So uh, yeah, that's that's it in a nutshell. They want to be able to add that to the the PRD zone, which um, could could have some impact, especially in existing PRDs, right? So so we do have PRDs that somebody might want to retrofit their home and be able to add it in. But you know, so they've they've proposed some of these requirements, pre qualifications that would help guide that. So we're looking for a recommendation to city council. Is this a good idea, bad idea? Is there other is there other rules that you'd want to add or take away? And like I said, the applicants here too that may want to answer some of your questions too.
Okay. Um, this is a public hearing, scheduled for a public hearing. Um, so we'll go ahead and open it for public hearing right now. And then we have someone come up. Thank you.
Dave Mon, resident on Doral Drive, twenty three eighty two. I've uh strongly would recommend that you consider opposing this. When we have a PRD zone, what we've done in the city is we've already made the concession of an extra density. Usually when you have an extra density, but you also have some single family units, that's part of the bargain. You get extra density for some units in exchange for having some green space and some open uh lots as well. When you do this, you now double up on that density by allowing ADUs inside of another single unit. This is roughly turning what was approved years ago as a single family unit into a duplex. Now technically, it's not a duplex because of, you know, little uh bits of the word, but we don't do that in the city in general. So this is a an attempt to subvert what we do in our other zones. And uh, I think that this is a really bad idea.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead and close public hearing. Back to the commission for comment discussion.
Um, this.
Go ahead.
We we, yeah, sorry. We uh currently have ADU uh approvals that are available for like our our one, our two, our three situations, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, in the application, there's actually petition to modify two parts of the code. One is in the PRD. The other is in the part of the code that talks about where ADUs are allowed. And you're right, ADUs are A one, R one, R two, R three, RPC currently.
How are they worded in the RPC?
Sorry, what?
In the RPC, how are we allowing them in there? Are they conditional use? Approve or are they?
They are conditional uses, um, minimum lot size of fifty six hundred square feet.
Okay. We have the applicant here. We have questions. The applicant or ask want to hear from him?
Why do you have a question?
Okay, if you want to come up, Mr. Bastian.
So my question is, is there a specific property that this is a a solving a problem for you?
So it's not so much solving a problem, but we do have lots in. It's called Village at the Bluff across the street from the old RC Willie property. We do have townhomes there and then we've got single family um units that we're building as well. Um, and you guys, as you guys are well aware, the the affordability crisis has just really hit that. Um, I don't I don't know if you guys have looked at what where where it's really affected, but it's that call it five, upper five hundreds to the mid seven hundreds. It's kind of that crunch for for the affordability. And um, uh, last year, we started to look into the ADU. Um, what is accessory drilling units and how that can help with affordability? Um, I've got a little a a flyer here. I'd love to leave it for any of you guys that are interested in it. But it just shows how, say you have a single family house for sale for six hundred thousand dollars. And you put five percent down. So that's five hundred and seventy thousand dollars that you're financing. Um, your payment's thirty six hundred dollars at a six point five percent interest rate. So with an ADU, if a house has an ADU, a person can actually qualify for more more borrowing power because of that ADU. So they can now actually qualify for a little more house than they could have otherwise. In that same scenario of that same type of house, but say it has an ADU finished in it. So now the purchase price is six seventy five because it has an ADU finished with five percent down. They'd be borrowing six forty one. So they're borrowing a little more money. Um, same interest rate at six point five. Their payment's four thousand fifty three dollars. So it's a little bit more. But that ADU, a one bedroom apartment, would rent for about fifteen hundred dollars. So that actually takes their payment down to twenty five fifty three monthly, which is a substantial savings for uh for most any homeowner. So that's why we're looking at the ADU. We don't want to put it on all the lots. We just want the ability to offer it on some of the lots. And they bring up a good point. The reason I said fifty two hundred square feet versus fifty six hundred square feet was simply because fifty two feet wide, you can do a three car garage. So that's why I came up with fifty two hundred. But in in the RPC zone, it does say fifty six hundred square feet. And if you guys would feel more comfortable with fifty six hundred, because that's what's in the other zones, I'd be okay with that. Like I said, I'm not trying to make it fit on everything. I'm just trying to have some. make it fit on everything. I'm just trying to have some availability to help people with the affordability issue. Anything else that I could answer with you guys on that?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And just one more thing real quick. I did notice that it is also available in the mixed use zone, the the mixed the mixed development zone as well. So there are multiple um, places that the the um accessory drilling units are allowed other than just R one, R two and R three. So thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. You know, Noah, I should know this. Um, in the R P C zone, are they get extra, is there like in the P R D, they have to do things to get extra density and things like that? Is there anything like that in the R P C?
No, overall density is the same, I think, as a R one. Uh, here I've got the yeah, it's four units. Okay, so it's the same, it's just the same as the R three. But they are allowed a lot smaller lots, so there's kind of some clustering and open spaces that are provided.
It's more of a cluster development, cluster subdivision development than?
More or less, yeah. Yeah, if you look here. Um, there you go, five units per gross here. So there there is a little bit.
A little more dense than.
A little bit. So it's, sorry, I said four, but so it's like a little bit more than R three overall density.
But that's what its density is. They're not getting anything act giving, they're not giving something to get something in this one then.
There is a development agreement and, you know, they're giving some H O A open spaces and a lot of times they'll include extra architectural extras to, you know, in exchange for the extra density.
Okay. Last question.
I tend to agree with Mayor said um, about the P R D. Um, I like the idea of especially with all the big crunch from the state coming down and saying, you know, make uh, housing more affordable where you can. Um, I definitely like that idea, but I have a tendency to see P R D zones like townhomes and those really, really tight. I mean, we, I I have a development not far from my house that is so it was built in the medium density residential, and that's similar to what we've got with these P R D zones. You couldn't do it. In that neighborhood, e- if even if we made this retroactively, I I can't see a single one of those units being able to effectively make this work without seriously impacting um, the the streets and and the neighborhood out there. So I I as much as I love the idea of, you know, bringing more affordable housing, especially since I'm gonna have kids in the next ten to twelve years looking for homes of their own, I definitely want them close by, but I don't know that crowding already very dense housing is necessarily the answer.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments from the commission?
I think the only, you know, with the added density, it's not changing the visual look of the home by adding an A D U. Uh, you know, if you're, most of them are gonna be a basement. Uh, and if there's gonna be a third car garage, um they're they're liking that extra space um, as a third car garage. I, uh, questions that I've had, or at least issues with the proposal is the the access that if there is a third car garage that we would want it to be towards the A D U, and so that there would need to be some kind of language uh, to address that there should be access to the garage from the A D U. So there wouldn't be an exterior door to get in, that they couldn't say, well, this is our garage space. And you have to park out on the street.
So it would make the garage tied to the A D U then rather than have it?
More closely tied to it, you know.
I think if you had, i- in the case where you're talking, if you had an exterior garage door with some kind of e- even temporary separator between that, between the third car garage and the two car garage.
Well, I, uh, I'm not worried about the separation between the cars in the garage, but that if there is an A D U unit, eh, that they would have a door from their unit into the garage so that it would not be a separate A D U's, you know.
Are you talking interior, uh, in interior door or could they?
An interior door, yeah, so that it, there would be a direct access from the garage into the A D U unit, because that way it it provides that visual connection that, you know, someone in the A D U would need to go through the garage to get access. And so then that's provides that.
Right, as opposed to having to park on the side and coming from a side door.
Yeah.
Okay.
I like that language. I wonder about the feasibility of them like in a situation with a uh, basement A D U in that kind of scenario, because usually the entrance to the basement is on the exterior rather than through the interior of the garage.
Which takes some planning ahead of time, so that you're building that into the house, not just adding it on. My cousin and aunt, who aunt lives with them and in an A D U, and they, she has an interior basement, you know, staircase in the garage to go down to her A D U, and so that she can pull in and.
I think that's worth if we're gonna, if we're gonna make a recommendation, I think that's something we would add in there.
Is there any kind of um, co- I I don't know about our code situation, but Noah kind of brought it up when he was taught, when he was describing it, you know, people tend to junk up their garage and then they no longer have that parking space any longer. I don't know if we can include that in the code or in the ordinance. But that would be something that if I, if I was to get on board, it would, they would have to have that minimum amount. And I'm talking like that would be the bare minimum that they would have to have, and they they have to be able to provide the parking. Otherwise, it creates a problem that the mayor brought up and I kind of re- iterated.
You know, one thing that we have in our ordinance is the definition of three different kinds of A D U's. You have a detached A D U internal, which is like your basement and attached. And so the picture that we showed is actually an attached A D U to the side of the house. Um, when you add a detached A D U in a really small lot situation, that could add a lot of visual, because the setback requirements for a detached structure, especially if you like build a garage, it could be three feet from the property boundary. And then they might convert a garage to A D U. So if if we limited it to only attached A D U's, that might limit some of the impact. And then the other thing is for a one bedroom, we only require one parking stall. You could say that we require two parking stalls. That might reduce, you know, make sure they have enough room too, but that would make, that would require them to be able to accommodate that extra parking stall either inside the garage. You'd you'd also probably want to clarify that tandem parking is okay, if you guys thought that that was okay.
Um, I have a comment if you might. Sorry, I, here's, I guess here's my problem is that we're trying to we're trying to write something in the code that is really pretty specific. And I'm really worried about the unintended consequences of just saying some specific language that will apply to some specific thing. I think that it personally think that if, if that's something that we want to do, I think that that's maybe more more of a case by case basis with development agreement as opposed to just a general uh ordinance change. That's kind of where I'm at.
I think that's a good, good approach, because we do have development agreements. They're allowed and required in many cases. But then it's a case by case basis rather than a general blanket approval.
We're, I mean, we're not gonna think of all the possibilities.
Well, not only that, but that, but doing, including it in development agreements also provides the um the limitation from existing P R Ds from going, oh, I want to do that.
Right.
But may allow existing houses that are P R Ds to.
You know, you could make it a major conditional use permit, so they have to go to planning commission every time they want to do it. Which, you know, adds some extra review. Because it is, the way it's proposed is listed to be as a conditional use, which means it's not a permitted use. Means that you could put conditions, but conditional uses in general are are permitted, but you have the ability to put conditions. So unless you see, eh, you could review the specifics of the property and say, oh, you're not gonna have enough parking here. We don't think that this is a good fit.
Yeah, as you were describing earlier, what you were saying in the last comment, that I'm I'm visualizing heat sheds in all of the P R T zones everywhere, and that just sounds nightmarish. So um, I think that it would have to have the minimum parking, what we've talked about. It would have to be an attached or uh, included for the basement. I agree with Scott um, mentioning that it should have some kind of uh, direct access from the garage. Um, and I also kind of like what Noah was just saying with regards to um, major conditional agreement. That it would have to it would have to have that extra layer of coming through us as well on top of that, but it yeah, it would, that would be potential. I mean, I still agree with Lon, that we're, we're even with all of those conditions putting on it, we're still not gonna get all the unintended consequences of of making something like this, so.
And Noah, I'm I'm not against A D U's, you know, so I I think there's, and you see a lot of um, new properties that are that's a good selling point to have an A D U on piece of your property. But if I'm correct from what I've understood in our code, we can have A D U's in R one, R two, R three, and even as was mentioned in some mixed use or um, the R P C conditional. Um, it's just, I'm not a big fan of changing the whole code to allow it as such a broad spectrum. I want it to be specific for what we've already allowed.
And and really, a P R D requires a development agreement. They could put it in there. City council has to approve it. They can, development grants can change, can override any of our code.
You mean like on the, in the onset, when they initially come in and anticipate that it'll be part of the development?
Yeah, if you're gonna put it in there, you can put in the development agreement. That's, and I don't mind saying that's personally why I hate development agreements, because I think if the code is what it is, that's what should be. If it's good enough, that should be what it's supposed to be.
I mean, this specific development has a development agreement already. They could petition to amend that.
The other, the other issue that can, I don't think, you you didn't mention, but is there, um, we're not gonna be up here forever.
Yep.
Our city council, existing as it is, as much as I, as much as I love them, are not gonna be in there forever. Uh, we've had previous city council members that have made some pretty bad mistakes. That same thing happened on planning commission historically over the last years. Um, just because I, it it could go wrong. It could go awry very quickly.
And the only counter that I have is that they can always change the code.
Yes, they can.
You know, they can.
And they can always do a development agreement too.
And they have in the past changed the code to allow things that then were not, turned out to be beneficial for the city.
Right.
Um, do we, okay, where do we want to go with this? We've talked a lot about a lot of different options.
I think that I'm gonna oppose what I've said before, and and I think I'd make that motion
Okay.
Chair, that we recommend city council uh, deny the application to amend the ordinance to allow A D U's in the P R D zone.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Second, okay, all in favor? I, any opposed?
None.
Okay, we have Commissioner Shea opposed, was the only one. Okay. I believe motion passes. Okay. Well, we're down one councilor commissioner. I have to always ask now. So, okay, so motion passes to recommend the city council deny this um, text amendment to the code. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a motion final or a discussion in the final plat for Woodside Homes for the final phase of Parkview at Shoreline.
Yeah, so this one we tabled in the last meeting, the discussion about the street cross section. And uh, so we we uh, discussed it as staff, discuss it with the city engineer and see what the the standards are. And uh, excuse me. Pardon me. The uh, the overall uh, discussion led to the conclusion that because this was, the preliminary plot was approved before those standards were uh, put in place, that it that does not apply here. Um, in discussions with the developer, actually now we, we were reminded that we had the same discussion with uh, phases three and four. And phases three and four were not required to include those those cross sections. So um, even though development of of the actual uh, groundwork occurred after the cross sections were completed. Uh, we do have the the Sadie's Glen project, excuse me, which was approved uh, just before those cross sections were uh, added to our standard drawings. But they have decided to voluntarily include the cross section uh, in their plan, so that was really up to them. But based off of that discussion, uh, we would recommend that this be approved, because it does meet all the requirements of the code.
Okay, thank you. And this, this is just a commission tonight, so no public here on this one, so um, comments or discussion? Yeah, I think that we should have approved it last time.
And and my comment was to, just direct and have that consideration, uh, seeing that it's phase five and that the rest bench, I have no objection.
Okay, we can take a motion then.
I'll, I'll do that motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion that's requested by Woodside Homes for approval of the final plats of Parkview at Shoreline, phase five and six, located at approximately twenty five hundred west and thirty seven hundred south. The subdivision phases comprise approximately twenty acres in the R three zone. And
All seconded up. Okay, we have motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item is amendments to city, uh, discussion on text amendments. This is a land pending land use applications to one at a time.
I'm curious about where this came.
And I think that makes sense.
Okay. Uh, this right here, I'll show you the proposed text uh, would essentially make it so that we review things in a more metered and um more organized fashion. The way our ordinance currently reads, technically, we could get a couple of applications on one piece of property. And sometimes they could pit one use versus the other use to try to give some leverage. Well, you know, if we don't, if you don't do this, I'm gonna do this. Um, so this would just help us uh, be more orderly. Um, city councils talked about it, um, so they're sending it back to you guys for recommendation. Uh, that would say, when you have a pending application, it would say, no land use application will be accepted so long as a previously filed land use application for the same parcel or address is pending. For purposes of the subsection, an application is pending if it is under review by a land use authority, the city council, or the judiciary. So if we had a pending lawsuit. Uh, two subsection, one does not apply to phases of subdivision developments that originate from a common parent parcel or to land use applications that require multi-stage approvals. And this is also, I'm sure, assuming that the you know, an application is pending only after a complete application is determined to be filled in.
Yeah, thank you. And discussion?
Uh, I'm gonna reiterate Lon's question a minute ago. Just curious what uh, kind of spurred this along.
Uh, well, we have had, you know, applicants wanting to apply for things on same parcel and um, you know, we just wanted to make sure it was what we were telling people was actually supported in our ordinance, and this is a good housekeeping item.
I I think it just makes sense to do it this way. You don't want to have more than one thing going on at the same time.
We kind of assumed that it was already spelled out this way, and this is kind of how we've been running things and interpreting things, but we just wanted to make it extra clear that this is the direction.
You like the kind of situation where somebody would come in and be like, well, I want to build this, but if it doesn't get approved by planning commission or whatever, then then we're gonna, I'm gonna have this application sitting in the wings, ready to go for the next idea. Is that kind of what we're talking?
Yeah, yeah, like, oh, if I don't get this one approved, I'm ready to submit this other application.
Okay, yeah, I agree.
And Noah, in my past experience, I've experienced this, you know, and have this happen where a developer came in. And Noah, in my past experience, I've experienced this, you know, and have this happen where a developer came in and he was just trying to rush things. So he had things just coming down pretty boldly, thinking everything was going to be approved, but he wanted all of his ducks in a row quickly. And we had to back off and say no one at a time.
Yeah, I think it's, it's good orderly process to get things through the city.
And this is just a situation where we're going to propose a motion in the future after.
This is a recommendation to council.
I just see this kind of a no brainer.
Yeah, me too. It's, it's just common sense how to do it.
Would, would this be preventing someone to have a zoning change and then approval plat at the same time? Do they have those two applications going or would that be?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, there are certain situations where we, where we can review things um, in tandem, but I think for the most part that would prevent that, prevent that scenario.
Are we doing a motion on this then? Is that?
Um, it's just discussion, I guess. Are we supposed to, there's no motion on the agenda. So are we giving a motion on this or is it just discussion?
Uh, this, this is a recommendation to city council.
Okay. So yeah, we make a recommendation to council then.
And we do, we do ask when they come and ask for zoning, right? We don't ask you, what are you, what are you going to do to this?
Yeah.
And we, we don't want to, we don't want to have a zoning change if we don't know what they're going to build and that. But if, if we're now putting a roadblock in the way, they can't do it at the same time.
Do we want to add that as an exception? That they can bring a zoning and a rezone, I mean, a general plan change, a rezone change in the same?
Well, we could say something like uh, notwithstanding ordinance, because in the P R D zone and a few of our zones, it's required to do a rezone and a preliminary plat together. So we could say, we could, we could tweak that to, to say in certain circumstances, our ordinance requires us to do it at the same time. And that's not what we're trying to prevent here.
Cause I think you brought up a good point that, you know, we do do that and it's one of the things we encourage. So we don't want to discourage it.
Yeah, we have a concept plan and a general plan that are grouped together process wise. And then we have a preliminary plat and a rezone that's grouped together for certain zones.
I think we could address that very easily by a slight change to the second paragraph. Where it says subsection one does not apply to phases of subdivision developments that originate from a common parent parcel or to land use applications that require multi-stage approvals. By saying, or to land use applications that require multi-stage or I had the word a minute ago. Simultaneous, that's not the word I was thinking of, but that's, that does the job. We could stick a word in there that says, for those things where you're required to come in and do both, this doesn't prevent that.
Okay, concurrent.
And I, yes, that's the word I was thinking of. Thank you.
I've been at work too long.
But I think to, to reiterate the point, we, we did do that exact thing earlier today with that general commercial request. What are you?
Yeah.
So I think with that language added in with that verbiage, it would mitigate the worries that we have.
Yeah, I agree.
With that and kind of firm up our ordinance a little bit.
Okay, so when we make the motion, make sure and add that word change in there, a word addition.
Congruent.
Concurrent.
Current.
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 Yes, different.
A little bit different meaning. Okay, if everybody's good, we can take a motion. This is again a recommendation to council.
I can make that motion.
Please.
It's my turn. Uh, Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend city council to add the pen application uh, language with the caveat that we add to part two. That concurrent applications that are required does not, do not apply to that restriction.
Okay, you have a motion, you have a second?
Second that.
A second, all in favor?
I.
Right.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item, discussion and motion on text amendment. Um, this is on light commercial zoning.
Okay, uh, we've included in the packets some language for potential new zone. There is a table in there that is kind of for work purposes. I don't anticipate that being in the final version. Most of our zoning or all of our zoning zones have a section that says permitted uses. For, for right now, it just says see table, but it could just list the ones that we settle on being permitted. And there's a statement here that says the following are permitted and no others. So sometimes that's a little bit controversial in, in land use world of what that really means. Cause you're ruling out a lot of options there unless it's specifically listed. And sometimes there's a use that just doesn't quite land. So from my experience, the more detailed you can be with the list, the better to try to capture what you really want and don't want. And so we've, we have this pretty long list. Uh, city council went through this list and they were concerned about a few of them. Uh, they were concerned about pools.
Let me back here for a quick, what's, what are we trying to get with this zone? What's?
Okay, sorry. Um, if you look at the first paragraph in every zone, there's usually a purpose statement. And so the main point is, is to place this kind of light commercial when you're next to single family residential on the rear side and then arterial road in the front. So really similar to what we've been talking about south of Walmart, a lot of those parcels have some sensitivities. And there's sometimes some concern about all the permitted uses that are allowed in the, in general commercial, because it's pretty wide open. So, and we have other uses. We have neighborhood services. We have professional office. This would just give us another tool in our tool belt to, you know, paint with, you know, a little bit more precise thing. And so I think with that in mind, if you can imagine what would go, what uses you wouldn't want in a situation like south of Walmart with, or there's probably some other places in the city too that this could be applied. And so the idea here is you go through this list. Hopefully you've had a chance to read this. But if there's any specific uses there, you're like, no way, that would be terrible right there.
There's a couple of my questions on.
Okay.
Why, why are we prohibiting gas stations?
Why are we what?
Why are gas stations prohibited?
Well, uh, gas stations
Out of noise.
Have a lot of traffic.
Okay.
Gas stations have smells, explosion risks, contaminate, soil contamination. You know, it's, it's more, one of the more intense uses, commercial uses with as far as traffic and things like that.
Okay, one of them, and this is, I can understand why. I just thought it was a little bit ironic, the name. It's a light commercial zone, but we prohibit light commercial flex manufacturing.
Yeah, because flex, flex is in, in general, it's because of the word flex, not because of the word light.
I just thought it was ironic that.
Yeah. Yeah. So like, if you say flex space, the next word is usually industrial and you get like plumbers with piles of pipe and, you know, there's usually garage door in the back and.
Oh, I totally understand why. I just thought it was a little ironic with the, the name that we chose.
Yeah. But if you can imagine that next to some homes, you know, if they have the garage door in the back and the crews coming and going and they're right in somebody's backyard, maybe that. Other thing that was built into here, I'll point out is these, uh, minimum lot standards. So you have a side yard thirty feet is hu, is like bigger than any other zones. And then um, rear yards thirty feet. So that would, that would do some protection, give some protection. Then this other one, the building height, you can only go one story. That would really make it pretty lower, you know, lower impact as far as what, what kind of building they could build there.
How are we defining convenience store? Cause that says prohibited.
Yeah, um, I would imagine that to be like a seven eleven without the gas pumps.
Yeah. And that's, why is that prohibited? I mean, that's no different than a
And well.
Oxish type store.
So we also have vape avenue that came in with the, with the business license as a convenience store.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Technically. And so it was just kind of like, I know it's convenient. If, if you imagine like kids going and getting penny candy, like the olden days, like at a nice little convenience store, but unfortunately sometimes that use, that name gets taken advantage of. And it's like, you know.
I can see that. I was thinking of like some of the standalone seven elevens or something like that. And it's like, that's
They usually.
That's no different than a, you know, a, a store going in there. So.
Yeah. And then a lot of standalone seven elevens also have a beer cave, you know, so we want a beer cave thirty feet from somebody's backyard.
A good point.
I don't know.
The other one I had a question on, and maybe it's just the places I've been at. A locksmith or a key shop doesn't look that high intensive of a use, at least the ones I've been to.
Where are we at?
It's, um, right after. Uh, what page is that's, it's the page starts at storage of sand, gravel, earth or stone.
Page one twenty-one.
Page one twenty-one. It's down there with the
Laundry.
Right below laundromat.
Oratory.
But right in between laundromat and mortuary.
There we go. I don't know. See, I just took a stab at things. So this, this is the starting point. So if you thought.
I, I guess the locksmith and key shops I've been at aren't small. They're small. They're not that high intent. I mean, you're not going to get a lot of people there all at once. So I, I.
I guess I was just imagining a bunch of vans with guys. I don't know what kind of, are they selling locks? I don't know.
I don't know. I've, I've been to one or two to get a, a car key programmed or cut. And
Okay.
They're not. You know, it's, it's, it's a store in like a strip mall, the ones I've been to it.
My problem is with the big box, I think that should be prohibitive. If we're in a big store, it needs to be general commercial.
Yeah, I do remember there was a, there was a key shop, a freestanding one in North Ogden. And it was just like this. There's never anybody there and you pull up any hour of the day and there's some guy like sitting in there. It's like, okay. Yeah.
We had this zone in my, in my neighborhood in Texas, we had this zone. I don't remember all the specifics, but I really liked it because when someone wants to reason to like commercial, it didn't mean that I was going to have a whole bunch of traffic coming to my neighborhood. Cause behind, behind, right, my back fence was bordering the property that was being changed, the zone and.
Yeah, we should just call this like not in my backyard zone.
Not in my backyard zone. Exactly.
Get off my lawn.
Noah, you know, I think a month or two ago, we approved a, a medical office building or a professional office building in, near the West Davis corridor and that off-road. But I liked about it, which I think would tie more into this type of zone. It was right adjacent to all the residential homes. And, but I don't remember if that piece of property was one or two stories.
It was a two-story.
Yeah, they, they said that they would probably do a two-story, but you never quite know for sure what it'll end up coming in at. But yeah, the, the other option is you could just rezonate a professional office all along there. And we kind of usually dentist offices and chiropractors, that's pretty nine to five type deal with the empty parking lot at night. Problem is the office market has been pretty low. And office generally doesn't, uh, give the city much sales tax. And so, you know, with the high traffic roadway like that, there is probably an opportunity for a little bit more intensity. It's just trying to be sensitive.
I, overall, I think this is a good option for us, another tool.
This would, this would be a good replacement for that scenario that we had a couple of months ago, as well as the situation that we had. Half an hour, forty-five minutes.
Yeah.
I, I'm not being nitpicky on this. I was just trying to identify some of the things that.
Yeah, that's the process. I want you guys to go through this list and say, oh no, I think locksmith should be a permitted use. So if you guys want to move those X's around, this is, this is what, where we're at on the process.
I wouldn't have a problem with doing, doing that on the locksmith situation. Yeah. As, as far as groceries, um, oh, no, no, no. I was looking at the wrong one. We're good.
Fast food being one that is more higher turnover, more, more businesses.
Yeah, more traffic.
Yeah. What do you guys think about fast food? I think I put it as, as permitted.
It's in this permitted.
I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with that being in there. Cause you, you, you may have higher traffic, but you're not necessarily, I don't know, I can see, I can see both sides of that, that argument, but.
We could make it a conditional. Oh, and a question I had, it's, there's no, no, on family food production and home use orchard up at the top of that page. But we don't allow people, there's no residential allowed in it. Why are we allowing those two?
If somebody wanted to have a little orchard or something that's next to their, you know, I think some of those properties might actually get surplus and some of it goes towards the adjacent backyard neighbor.
Then why would they zone it this?
I don't know. They probably wouldn't.
Yeah. And correct your production word while you're there.
Drunken. Oh, yeah.
Producing. So I guess my recommendation is family food production and home use orchard. I would.
Or beehives.
Yeah, I would probably, uh, beekeeping is already prohibited up there. I, I don't see a reason why to have those as permitted when we don't allow, you know, dwelling units or things there.
Yeah, you can just take it off and just.
Yeah, I just take.
Not mention it.
Yeah, I just make those two as, as prohibited. Prohibited.
Yeah, I know beekeeping, like you can pretty much do that anytime, anyplace now, since all the bees are dying in the state was like, you guys need more bees. And so there might be some of these things that are, that are, uh, you know, passed up by state laws.
Those are my recommendations from when I went through it.
I do have a couple of questions as far as, because the ordinance, you said that landscaping and buffering complies. Do we need to establish, is like light, is it now light residential or light? Manufacturing, is it a manufacturing? Is it a commercial? Is it what, what buffer are they?
That's a good point.
Getting pulled into so that the, all of these will know what, what the landscape did. Because if you have thirty feet uh, and fifteen feet of it needs to be landscaped, you only actually have fifteen feet driveway or a.
Yeah. So check it out. There's already a category called light commercial. But even though we didn't have a light commercial zone, we kind of had grouped some of these other type of land uses together to try to define it. So if, for example, you had a new light commercial next to a single family, they would be required to do a buffer type C. And that's a fence, ten feet of landscaping, but they have a thirty-foot landscaping in that particular zone. So, or a setback at least. So there might, that's for the building. So there might be a building and then parking. But they would at the very minimum have to have ten feet of landscaping between them and the fence. And then of course, trees and shrubs.
Cause right now against residential would, would need to provide the concrete privacy, right?
Yeah, I guess the sword cuts both ways. If you, if you make them do less intensity, then there's less to buffer. But yeah, right now. So if you were to do, do a commercial next to single family, it's, it's buffer D. So full-blown commercial would be a concrete fence, fifteen feet. So you could take it further and in the zone, you could say it's required to have a concrete fence, no matter what. And that could be part of their, in the zone language. If you look here, it talks about using landscaping and stuff to to screen lights. Let's see. Yeah, car headlights shall be screened from view, adjacent residential properties, walls, architecture and landscaping. And you can take that a step further and just say that in this particular zone, you got to have a concrete fence.
Uh, another quick.
Like that.
Worry about that. And I agree with that. As I'm thinking and what you brought up about the one from a couple of months ago, it potentially being a two-story home now in, or a two-story business potentially. Um, in that particular situation, it made sense because of the offset that it was from the rest of residential. I'm sitting, as I'm contemplating this, thinking about the properties along annalope and everything. Like Marshall, if they were able to do two-story and I didn't see that, I didn't see any restrictions in there. I may have missed it, but that being right up against those homes and having potential two-story business or something. That being right up against those homes and having intention two-story business or something with people being, or business being looked at. I, I would.
I think in this ordinance, it says one story.
Yeah, right here under height.
Ah.
Building height.
Okay, cool. Thank you. I did miss that then.
That's okay.
Okay, any other comments or discussion?
Uh, and then one other thing is the, instead of using the word car, I would like to use vehicle so that.
Yeah.
They use the truck, uh, delivery truck is not a car and it would, I would want those headlights also shielded.
Yeah, that's a good point. So do you want all these changes in the motion or do you want, you just kept track of, you say with the changes recommended by the commission?
Yeah, I mean, this is a first look for you guys. We can come back and I can make the changes and we can hold a public hearing and then forward it to city council.
Sounds good.
I like that.
Okay, so do you need a motion to table? That's just what you'll do with it?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Find which way we can just leave it and you'll bring it back or do you want us to table it?
Well, uh, yeah, I think tabling is probably the, we probably should just put this on a work. The work agenda rather than having it, uh, have to have a motion. Cause we, we don't want, it's a recommendation to city council, so. I don't think we're ready to make the final recommendation yet.
Let's go ahead and have a motion to table until, until, as, cause since we're still working on it.
I can make that motion.
I can move that. Okay, we have a motion and the other one, a second? Okay, a motion and a second. Motion to table as we continue working on it and put it in work session next time. And then we won't have to worry about it. And then, um, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi, any opposed? Okay, next item on our agenda is to adjourn into work session.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, we're now in work session. Um. Department of Business, so. I guess we've got city council liaison report first, so council, Watson.
I don't have anything major. Um, our last meeting was a work session, so we discussed a lot of planning items, but we didn't vote on anything. Um, one thing that you guys have discussed quite a bit was the, uh, the buffer, the, the code regard, or the code require, require, or. The code regarding buffer requirements against a freeway. So we did discuss that. Um, I don't think there was any huge objections or changes. I think, uh, I think we'll see that being passed the next time we vote on it. So. That was really the most significant update unless anybody, any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Appreciate Paul.
Okay, city attorney, Colin, you have anything for us?
I do not. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. How come the agenda items?
Uh, for the February eighteenth meeting, it's looking like we have a preliminary plat for Hammond Lane, which is. You know, the golf course kind of to, you probably remember the rezone on that. Um, and then next time we're looking at. Talking more about this light commercial zone. You mentioned putting on a work meeting. I think we were planning on maybe doing a public hearing and.
Oh, you want to do a public hearing on it?
And just vote it if we're ready.
Okay, with the changes we made, I wasn't sure where you wanted it.
It's up to you. I, I know that, uh. We'd bring it back and have city council talk about it and before they voted it on it most likely.
Okay, I'm, I'm fine with putting on the regular agenda. I just, well, you talked about you should have, should have brought it to work session. That was.
Sure, tonight we probably should have, but. If we're not ready, it's okay. If we needed to take a little more time, I would imagine I'd have to.
And with the changes that we discussed, you make them then they're on there. I think it'll be pretty, we'll be.
Yeah.
All our ducks will be in a row.
Yeah, let's just go ahead and leave it on the regular agenda then.
Cool. And then we have a major conditional use for a daycare on five hundred west. There's a like old log home that they've purchased and want to do a daycare there.
Okay.
And there's a second daycare, but I don't know if that'll be on this next meeting. So that's what we have for the eighteenth.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything upcoming past the eighteenth we need to be aware of or? Not that you have dates for when.
Sure, yeah. I mean, tentatively. Um. We have, uh, an application to PRD from A1 and R1. Uh, it's a U dot surplus property. Uh, most likely that'll, that'll come in March fourth meeting. If, if, uh, everything revisions and staff comments and things are addressed.
Is, is that over near the new fire station area or where are we looking at?
Yeah, directly west of Jensen.
Okay.
Yeah, about the same south as the new fire station. And then we have a application for a site plan revision for Pacific Steel. If you remember, they came in and proposed kind of doubling their footprint. But they, I guess they forgot to add a section of the building or they decided later to add a little. It'll be a pretty simple site plan revision. And then, um, we have. Uh, final plat for legacy park estates, phase four and five coming up in the second meeting of March. I think that's probably about where we're at for the new stuff.
Sounds good. Thank you. Uh, anything from commission, commission reports? Okay, uh, we'll take a motion adjourn then.
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Okay, media adjourn. Thank you everybody for your time tonight.
Well, it's in the lip race. They can rip right over the top. Yeah, so. Would you guys?
On good day, my friend.
You too.
The next time.